Do we have any children that'd like to lead us in or pledge tonight?
Yes.
And what is your name?
Lyric.
Lyric, I'm so glad you're here tonight. If you will, just go ahead and lead us whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and call our meetings order. We'll start with our roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Anita Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Throgmorton, absent. John Collins?
Here.
Kira Hungate?
Here.
Don Rollins, absent. Joe Towor, absent. City Attorney and City Clerk, you're both present. So, next item on our agenda is the approval, or is the adoption of our agenda. I would like to go ahead and move under new business items up to just below the public forum. I know we have several people here that are interested in the rezoning ordinance, and so we'll go ahead and put them ahead of the business reports. Have a motion, second, to make that change to our agenda. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from August fourteenth. Will there be changes that need to be made to those minutes for our meeting? Do we have a motion to approve those?
I have a motion, I'll second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. So up next is our public forum. In our public forum, we allow two minutes per speaker to come and address the council with concerns, comments, praise, whatever you'd like to address the city or the city council with. We will not take action on anything that is brought up during our public forum, but we will make note of it. And the council may ask questions back, so it's just more of a communication effort between the council and the citizens. So if anyone would like to address the council during this time, please stand up, come to the podium, tell us who you are. No? Yes, ma'am? Come up here and tell us your name and blood type.
At age.
Hi. I actually want to give you a compliment. I want to give Kristi a compliment.
You can have a little girl, if you want.
This last set of minutes, I thought, was really good. One thing that I have sort of had a pet peeve on is, if you wanted to look anything up, you would've been up a creek without a paddle, because all you had was the ordinance number and who made it and who passed it. There was nothing to say what it was or anything else. She had just enough in it this time that if I wanted to walk in and say, "Kristi, I want to look at ordinance so-and-so and it pertains to this," you know, you could find it like that. And that I liked. You did good. The other is, I want to thank you and you for Westfest, and anybody else that had anything to do with it. It was really good. I was in and out, because I didn't want to melt, but I wanted you to know that, I know you've worked on it four or five years now. You're about, just about got it down, so next year should be, you know, real easy. But I want to thank y'all for that, too.
So Paula, before you leave, I want to tell you something that Kristi is working on slowly. We don't have the resources to work on it quickly, but someday you will be able to sit in the comfort of your living room and pull those ordinance all up from your iPad.
But I won't want it then.
Well, we're still working on getting, we're going to get that stuff digitized to where you can access it from anywhere.
Good.
So it's a long, long process, but Kristi is moving forward with it slowly, but sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seventy-two, by the way, Misty.
Can we capture that in the news? Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and close. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I was looking at you.
We're talking.
The center of attention for two minutes.
Tell us your name.
Mary Brinks. I go to the library, not as often as I used to, but I've considered the library the social center of West Fork in a lot of ways. You meet people down there. I'm the emcee at the Friday night fallings, and, which is this Friday night, at six-thirty. And I've met several people there at the library who are talented and who have indeed come and performed at the fallings, and a lot of people I've met there have come as spectators, and I've made friends there. I love, I love our library. John's been there, I don't know how long John has, John Riley has been in the library, at least three, maybe five. And he's just great with everybody that comes in there. You can, you can just have, like, a general idea of what the book is about that you want to find, you know, and he can find it for you. He's really good. There was a lot of scrap paper there that had gone through the printer and maybe it wasn't what someone wanted. He gave me a bunch of that to, to take home, because I can use it, you know, to print my songs off and different things. It doesn't matter if there's something on the other side. I didn't have to go buy a whole room of it. So, and I just want to commend him for just being, I think what West Fork needed, Joan Botman was excellent. I love her. I think we, we really got something good here with John, and, and I just wanted to, to say that thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take that, let's have a round of applause. We don't get comments like that on our department heads nearly enough, so thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll close our public forum. I am going to ask John Collins to give us a quick update on Westfest before we move into the rest of our agenda.
It was pretty good, the best yet, as far as our proceeds to give out, yeah, our donations. This year, we've been giving five hundred to Shop With A Cop in West Fork and five hundred to Green. This year, we had enough money raised, we're going to give a thousand to West Fork and a thousand to Green. And it was just a good year. The rain kind of hurt the car show, but other than that, we had the band back in the parade, and it went well.
All right, so we'll move to our next item on business, which is ordinance four-seventy-six, the rezone of parcel of land opposite Centennial. Before we get started there, I would like a motion to suspend the rules. Read the panel.
I have that motion.
Motion, second. We'll do a roll call vote. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Okay, so we have. Motion carries. And so, Walter, would you like to go ahead and formally give us the planning commission's recommendation concerning this ordinance?
Ordinance four-seventy-six, was it?
Yes.
Yes. The planning commission formally recommends that we approve this lots of places, so the number, ordinance four-seventy-six.
The rezoning.
It's rezoning.
So before we take comments, do we have a motion regarding ordinance four-seventy-six?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance four-seventy-six to accept the words of twenty-seven.
Okay, I'll say. Have a motion, second. We'll do a roll call on that. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
So the ordinance just passed.
The ordinance just passed, yeah.
I don't know if you want to hear any comments or not.
I did.
Well, I think you certainly could there, and certainly at this meeting, if this council decided, you know what, that's not what we want to do, they could definitely make a motion to rescind it.
Rescind it, okay. So would anyone like to address the council concerning ordinance four-seventy-six? I apologize for taking that vote prior to that. Yes?
Hello, I'm Fran Dixon, five-eight-oh, to Casey Lane, and I appreciate the thought of rescinding it. The gentleman that we just spoke with, Mike Parks, had a hesitation on his vote until peer pressure moved in. And as someone who has recently moved back here, I would think that each person would have more of an individual thought on that issue, and that his initial, um, his initial conveyance that a study be done before the rezoning was indeed a fact, I just want to thank him for having that insight, whereas no one else did.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to, this council? Would the council like to reconsider our vote on ordinance four-seventy-six? No? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's input sincerely, I, thank you.
And while everyone's here, I wish everyone was still here, but I thank you for coming. This is how government works best, when we come out as a community, we voice our concerns. We won't always agree, but we, we do welcome the comments, the questions. It's, it's not fair to you to come into our city with, with a building if you don't know the, the wherewithal of our city, where, where the city stands, how our citizens feel. So I appreciate it every time someone comes out for, for any issue. I, I wish this room was full every time we met, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll move back to our business reports. Walter, go ahead and give us a quick update on the planning commission.
Also, we're, we're still going on, working through our zoning possibilities right now. We only got the one commercial. We're looking into that. Hopefully, we've got some ideas in our next meeting coming up about what, what, how we can further develop that. We're still down two members, if anybody would like to put in an application for that. But you don't have to be in city limits, we, everybody gets currently in city limits, so you don't have to be. And our next meeting will be the third Thursday of every month. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Walter. Anne, are you going to give our economic beautification committee a pick?
Yes, Jennifer sent me notes. Okay, so the Tree City, oh, sorry, Anne helped to.
You're fine.
The Economic Development Beautification Committee. The Tree City is going to give away the trees and shrubs in October, and we're partnering with the Master Gardeners. Right now, there's no candidate forum that's going to, we're not going to have the candidate forum, because we didn't have any local races. We have one sponsor for Small Town Big Delights right now, and so we're looking for more sponsors. And those interested in the pro, the project with the big town, small li, or Small Town Big Delights, the Christmas, for the parade and stuff, be sure and come to the next meeting. It will be next Tuesday here at six-thirty.
They don't, they haven't, yeah, she didn't give me an actual date, just sometime in October.
Any questions for Anne? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, our library. John?
First of all, I'd like to, I want to meet my, the two lights of my life here, my wife, Kelly, and my son, Johnny. And Kelly is, teaches seniors at Fayetteville High how to write papers, so she's a superhero. And she keeps me humble, so she's pretty much better than me at just at everything. Most talented person I know, probably. Johnny is, will be five in December and going to the new school right now. I'll just be brief, we did hire a children's services librarian, her name is Shannon Reed. She's a resident of West Fork. She had, had been working at the Masons in Bentonville, and she went from full-time to part-time because she was intrigued by the opportunity, she was interested in maybe changing directions in her career, and she's very excited about libraries. Yes.
Mike Thornton had a question, but I'll put one.
Okay. I'm not speaking loud enough, or, but she's, I think she's off to a great start. I think she's the right person to, at this time. She's the first children's services librarian we've ever had in West Fork, so we're going to have this chance to really build up our program here, our resources, and get that rolling, so. And also wanted to share with you, we got a really nice, I assume, pretty expensive resource called Coding in a Box. It's a, a full kit of coding robots, games, everything you would need to start a, like a coding club or, you know, coding classes, you know, aim more at young people, because incorporates games and things like that, and it's, but, and I think it'll give us an opportunity to start, start a club or something like that, a regular meeting at the library to get kids interested in learning more about how to code. And we have replaced all five of our public computers recently. We may have replaced two of our, our employee computers as well, that were, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and get that done, despite, you know, having the expansion still in the, in the future. It seemed like a good time to do it, there was really time, the computers that we had were really dated, so our IT person, Art Hughes, did a really nice job, got us a good deal on the computers. So we're lucky to have him, he's a really smart guy. That's about it. Any questions?
Questions for John? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just Pauline, is that who she is?
My report's going to be short and sweet, John Collins told me it had to be very short.
Thank you.
Our numbers are overall for the year, we're up about sixty-seven thousand dollars, so that's looking good, even though our numbers this month were down just a tad. We found out on Monday morning, it would've been really neck and neck, but found out that the deposit hadn't been quite finished on Friday, the day of the month, so it didn't go on until last month, went on this month. Our numbers this month were up quite a bit, just even the citation entries and cases, new cases filed. Anybody have any questions for me? And I did it to you again, I didn't tally up my year to date, promised next month I'll remember to do that.
Okay.
I won't. Take me some rosemary and wear it.
Any questions for Paula? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Nelson?
I don't know if I can be quite that short, we tried, she was real short. We had four-hundred-and-twenty-nine service calls, which was the most we've had all year. We issued a hundred-and-seventy citations, eleven of those were in Greenland. We had two DWIs, four liquor violations, and all three warnings on city ordinances, and sixty-two warrants served. If you flip a couple pages, you'll see we've got some congratulations, I always like to point those out. Officer Gillen was congratulated for the way that she handled a funeral procession, procession for a family, and BVs, Brenda thanked us for the business checks. So I like to point those out, and I also want, I want to point out some statistics starting from two thousand and sixteen. First of all, is the break-in statistics. If you look at our, if you look at our break-ins on RPS in two thousand and sixteen, we had nineteen break-ins. Two thousand and seventeen, we had ten, and year-to-date, this year, we've had six. Can we keep it below ten? I don't know, but we're going to work on that. If you look at the drugs, and I'm really bringing this up to kind of, for the guys, I want, I want you guys to see what they're doing and how active they are, and what they're attempting to do. For the drug arrests, in two thousand and sixteen, we made twenty for the year. Two thousand and seventeen, we made thirty-seven. In two thousand and eighteen, the year is not over, we've made sixty-six drug arrests in the city of West Fork.
One wrong direction.
Well, what we hope is it goes the wrong direction, and then goes back to the right direction.
Back to the right direction.
Hopefully, they'll stop.
Yeah, good. Too many of them.
Is there any?
Arrest.
Arrest, not officers.
Yeah, yeah.
Arrest.
Well, we hope sooner or later, there's nobody to find. They'll avoid us, so.
Sounds like job security.
Any questions? Do you want to?
Yeah, if you would, John, while you're there, a couple things, just let the council know. If you would let us know about Officer Langston.
Okay, I'm sorry, Officer Langston has taken a job with the VA. I could say I, I didn't see it coming, but it came, we kind of expected it. That's hard to compete with. It's twenty-year retirement, it's a federal job, and they start about seven to eight thousand dollars more than what we pay, and go up from there. So we have replaced him with Officer Goggins after, not an easy decision, we, we interviewed three, I interviewed with the school, and Officer Goggins was selected. Our midnight officer is going to be Craig Brown. He comes with five years of law enforcement experience, two of those being at Fayetteville. He recently moved back from Oklahoma, and we're glad to have him, he's well-known, everybody knows him around here, and he's obviously well-trained. I know that, because I can see it, and Fayetteville trainers are officers good, we know that. So we're excited to have him, and we hope he works out good, and we go from there.
So then, we've all seen on Facebook a lot of issues about our animals, dogs in particular, and so I'd ask the chief to look into this a little bit, and give us some, give us a little bit of guidance, tell us where we actually are, there's a lot of misinformation going around about this, so.
You know, on vicious dogs, a police officer can take action on a vicious dog. That also speaks in our ordinance about an animal control, the animal control. We do not have, we did years ago, right now, we do not have an animal control officer. I talked to Washington County, I talked to Fayetteville, and I've talked to Greenland. Washington County and Fayetteville employ pedestrians, not pedestrians, but just citizens, civilians, to be their animal control. My guys are not trained in, in to be animal controlled. They don't have the equipment, and they don't have the means besides protecting life. Now, if somebody, if a dog is biting somebody, yes, we can put that dog down, but we don't have the proper means to transport that animal to the shelter. Same with, with hurt animals, unless that animal is not mean. Now, there's several hurt animals that are not mean. If the animal's hurt and aggressive, we also don't have those means. An animal control officer is somebody that's trained to do that. If I tell my officer tomorrow, if I say, "Officer Goggins, I want you to respond to that call, and I want you to confront that dog." If he confronts that dog and he is bit, and I had not trained him properly to deal, and given him the proper equipment to take care of that animal, I feel like we could be held liable as a police department. Now, that's a situation we have to deal with. I know there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of fees, and, and sooner or later, it'll come up to this council, it'll be up to you guys, but it's something that, as a police department, we are not equipped to handle. I know a lot of people believe that they just call the police and their dogs or their animals goes away. It doesn't work like that. I'm sure you, we have policemen that are sitting on this council, and I'm sure they can tell you, it's hard to deal with a vicious animal. It's very hard. And we, you know, the truth is, we don't get that many calls. I think we had one last month. We don't, we're not overridden with animal calls. We do get them, but we don't get a large majority of them.
So to add a little bit to that, so we live in a world of regulation now. The days of, of being able to, to take a dog, put it in a kennel, and drive it to the animal shelter, they don't exist anymore. That animal has to arrive at the animal shelter in an air-conditioned environment. We, we cannot take a dog and go put it in a kennel on city property. If we were to open a dog kennel here, it's going to have to be an air-conditioned facility, climate-controlled facility. There, there's a lot of, a lot of thought, speculation, that we can just, we can go get those dogs and chain them up until we find them, but that's, that is highly illegal.
Yes.
We can't do that. An official who, who would be an animal ordinance officer, they have to go through classes. I don't know if any of those are offered locally or not.
No, the, the classes, I looked up classes, too, that, the class is offered in Conway. It is right at about four hundred dollars for the week, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, plus, I think they were offering a hotel for a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and that's the initial class. There's three others after that. That's the initial, that's what I got from Washington County, that's the initial class. So you're looking hotel, food, you're looking at about a thousand dollars for the initial class. That just comes with the certification, certification, then you've got two other classes that follow that, from what I was, when I was talking to Washington County, that's what they were telling me.
I mean, I basically saw them, they had to designate, they were just having a new family.
It's, it's basically an academy for animal control, is what it is.
And so what we have to decide, as, as a council, as a city, do we have that big of issue? Did anyone drive past a stray dog coming here tonight? If you look at Facebook, sometimes you think you can't step out your front door without stepping on one. And, and I get that there, there are issues occasionally, but do we have an issue in West Fork that warrants another salary position, the training, a vehicle, equipment? I mean, there's a lot that goes into that, that we really have to be mindful of when we're, when we're thinking about this, and I know things get on Facebook and they, they kind of blow up, but if you would, those, those are the facts that surround us. Greenland is in the same position, they do not have an animal control officer. We have, we have issues, the county called, I think it was last month, John, the county called and said, "We're not taking animals." We have a contract with the county. They weren't taking animals, they were full, and, and that's what, I mean, that, that is an issue that, that all of the, of the kennels or, or whatnot are dealing with, or they're filling up.
Yes.
It's not just West Fork.
I talked to Greenland today, and, and talked to their police chief, and they just said they very rarely, if ever, take dogs. They just don't have the, the budget and the means to, to transport. So they're kind of in the same boat.
Any questions from the council on that?
And I know you can't help, it's one of those, and it happens in every town.
It does, and we have some citizens who try to help on a volunteer basis, and that's great. Is it perfect? No. Can we grow in that area? Absolutely, it's just, oh, we, to a point where we have to take that next step. I don't feel like we all.
I think we have more trouble with dogs that belong to someone we want.
Yes, if you have.
I mean, there, there's like five dogs, and they would get loose.
And we can't, we can't, if we can find the owner, we can do something.
They're not vicious, but, so I.
And, and that's.
I know them all by name, so. But they're loose.
Yes.
And they want early out.
And I will tell you, if I was going to lodge a complaint against our police department, it would be that, those guys do not want to write a ticket when they know whose dog. They want, they want the owner to come and get the dog and fix the fence, and some people get so aggravated, "Well, they didn't even give them a ticket." Well, do you want a ticket when your dog happens to get out, you know? I don't, my dog's been out before. So the police department, they try to work with people, and you just, you can't make everyone happy, is what it boils down to. So I commend, Goggins, I'm not, I'm not knocking on you guys, I commend you for the work you do, but we do, we get more complaints on our police department, because they're trying to help and trying to work out a situation, as opposed to writing tickets for everything that you, so.
And I'd be appreciative.
Any other questions, John?
And if anyone, I mean, I know there, if any, I think, I don't need, some should need a lot, but I think there was something brought up that, that's, that's not tied to the city over there, there's a foundation that helps dogs, but it's not tied to the city. They do a fundraiser this end of the year, and they have like a groomer that donates her time, and the veterans that donates their time, and I, I think they work with Washington County, but the city does not fund that.
It takes a lot of money to, to fund one of those shelters, to keep a bat. Thank you, John. Isaac, public works update, Orange Street.
Don't have a whole lot. St. Dick's Road is open. Everybody drive it?
Yes.
It's nice. Nick could not be here tonight, he wanted me to, to pass along just a couple of things. The final cost estimate is, is done for the project, the total project of Fayetteville. The final cost estimate is, is done for the project, the total project of Fayetteville. Come in just a little over eight point three million dollars, which fifty percent of that would be ours as of right now. It is down there for the ANRC to review, and it's in their rate analysis department, so, so hopefully there'll be some wiggle room there, maybe we get a little more forgiveness. We have set up our private meeting to go over our options, that's set for September twenty-seventh, I believe that's six, right, Kristy? Five thirty?
Five thirty.
We have also, Nick and I have kind of gone together and got Goodwin and Goodwin to give us a price on getting some TV work done for some sewer. We've, we've kind of found a couple of issues down, down Ann Street, or down McKnight Street here, on the Ann Street area, that we're going to get televised, that we think maybe most of our problems are coming from. They're going to come in Thursday and do about twenty-two hundred feet, so I'm excited about that. Hopefully, we, it comes in at just the right time for budget, so if, if there's a major problem down there, we can try to get it budgeted for next year and try to get it fixed. Other than that, I don't have just a great deal. The sidewalk on Robinson, I still haven't heard anything back from this, it's still down there being reviewed by the state. The guy at McQuillan that's designed that is leaving, so it's going to be passed off to somebody else, so Nick assured me that I'd get to meet him pretty quick, and keep the ball rolling on that. The mayor and I did meet with the State Highway Department about some state aid for paving here in, in West Fork. The way I took it is, we kind of made the first initial cut, and we're, we're in the hunt, they come down, looked at our streets, and hopefully we'll hear something back about that shortly, I would imagine. That funding will come in 2020, I believe is what he said, yeah. So, we got that, got that to look forward to. Other than that, I don't have anything on the show, have any questions?
Any questions, Roger? So, for, for all the citizens that are here, Isaac, you kind of went over the sewer costs, but a lot of people aren't here all the time, so what Isaac was talking about is, we finally got our final price, bid price, to take our sewer to Fayetteville. So, we have, how many miles is that, the line that they're laying?
Eight point something.
So, eight miles of, part of it's gravity flow line, part of it's high-pressure sewer, and the, the bid came in at eight point four million?
Yeah, a little over eight point three.
Eight point three million dollars to get it there. And so, the way that's working is, we're working with the state, the state is issuing bonds to finance that, and they are forgiving half of that. So, as it currently stands, the city is going to be on the hook to pay four million dollars to get sewer up to Fayetteville, and that's, that is how we're currently looking to deal with our aging sewer plan. So, I don't know if everyone was aware of, of some of those difficulties that we're dealing with in the city, as far as where some of the city's money's going. That's where your tax dollars are going, is to get that sewer line to Fayetteville. All right, thanks, Isaac.
You betcha.
Chad?
My first committee didn't meet last month, so I wasn't able to get any minutes in your packets, but a few things is, football has started, we had our first games this weekend, so that's off to a good start. Our flag and program will start their games next week as well. We've just mainly been mowing and maintaining the parks at this point, and so I don't have a whole lot else to report as far as that goes. I do, I want to thank the West Fest people as well, all the people that, excuse me, that are involved with it, I get a chance to see a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff, and how much preparation, and the time that they spend, you know, leading up to it, and airing, and cleanup and stuff, so I thought they did a great job, and I just want to thank them. Also, Chief Myers and the Fire Department for letting my Pee-wee participants ride on the fire trucks here, in the parade every year, and they enjoy that, that's, I think that's one of the highlights of getting to, getting to participate in the Pee-wee Football and Cheer Program, is to ride those fire trucks, so, and to throw candy at people, evidently, so. But, anyway, so that's about all I have.
Any questions for Chad? And West Fest thanks you and Isaac for helping us get started also. A big thank you to Danny Moore. He took vacation and helped us this year. He helps us every year, but he took vacation to help us this year. And so, that's, and we've talked about that before, but that's something that I don't think we see in every city. We talked about it at the Fourth of July celebration, when we had spouses and the entire volunteer Fire Department down there volunteering to make those things happen. We got Danny taking vacation to volunteer his time to West Fest, but that's, that can't be commended highly enough.
Those are major events, there's no one person or one committee even that, that can get all that accomplished. It takes help from city employees and officials and lots to pull these things off, so.
And we thank you.
Anything else?
All I have. Chief Myers?
I think I do do the white shirt better than Chief Nelson, you know? Just pretty typical mud, pretty cut and dry, about average call volume, nothing, thank goodness, nothing major happening down. Sat down today several times, trying to come up with a list of people I'd like to thank for helping us with Pancake Breakfast, and I'll miss somebody. So, anybody that did help us, all of our guys did a fabulous job, thank you to West Fest, they're bound to be a part of that, people that, we had, they had their wives or kids, I mean, we had everybody helping out, so, but mostly, you want to publicly say thank you to the community for coming out and supporting us, without them, we couldn't exist, so thank you to the citizens in town and the surrounding areas, so. I did give the mayor, he asked about a, had a phone call of somebody wanting a price, or what it would take to put in a tornado siren in town. Check with the company, they gave us just a rough estimate, not including finding a site to put up a siren, electricity, any of that, you're looking at about seventy grand to do something to that. He recommended three to cover the whole town, that's why it'd be quite that much, but that kind of gives us an idea, if anybody ever, ever wants to do that, we'll figure out how we can do it. Seventy for the whole, for all of it.
So, the way it came up is, we had a phone call, someone requiring about our tornado siren, and why we aren't using it, and so I talked to the chief.
Yeah, the one we had at the fire station, we never intended to be a tornado siren.
It wasn't, it wasn't a tornado siren, so we used to, I guess, set it off.
Set it off to alert the firemen back in the day, before pagers, to let them know they had a call, so that they can run to the fire station, figure out where they were going.
So, so that is, that is kind of where we're at, that isn't a tornado siren, someone has to physically go, does it even work now?
No, it's actually dismantled, we've taken it down, it is not even, not even hooked up anymore.
So, that's, if anyone does ask, that's, that's kind of where we're at with it. We, we never had a tornado siren.
Right.
I think you said, chief, that at one time, some of the police officers used to drive through town.
Yeah, I think with their sirens blaring on their PA system, trying to alert people that, you know, they're bad weather of some kind, and, you know, gosh, as big as this town's grown, how would you do that?
Right, right, so, so that's kind of where we are, if anyone hears, if anyone gets questions about that.
Other than that, I'll maybe think I'll show you questions for me.
Questions, chief? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Kristy?
I have underlined a few items, but for the most part, the budget is where we expect it to be for this time of year. There really wasn't that many lines, thank you. There's not that, there's not that many, so it's really looking good. I had gotten all of the department heads their budget information for them to start working on for next year. They'll turn those in the end of this month, so at our next meeting in October, we'll be talking about the dates for a budget workshop.
You did, so the budget, I thought the budget looked terrible this month, almost everyone was over budget, but most of that was capital outlay.
They bought their trucks.
Yeah, it was, it was all planned.
I've already asked that argument, though.
Income versus expenses for the month didn't look great, but that's, that's why, we had some, some major purchases. Overall, it looks pretty good. We, we are setting good, the department heads, Kristy, I can't give one up credit for the way they have managed these budgets, and we'll talk about our audit report in a little bit. I thought I had a note on there. Any questions, though, about the budget?
So, at the next meeting, we'll set a workshop, I said something after.
Yeah, the department heads are, they're supposed to be fighting right now, determining what they want for the coming year. Any other questions for Kristy? All right, so we'll close our business reports and move into new business. The first item we have in new business here is review and approve changes to the salary cap. And so, this is something we've talked about before, it's been a while. The reason this came up for me was, and Kristy has put in here what the current approved salary caps are as of nine, eight, twenty fifteen, and she also has what proposed changes I have for that for nine, eleven, twenty eighteen, so front and back of that paper. So, I think I've made the comment to the council before that I hate caps, whether it's on the front end or the back end. I understand why we have them, it helps keep things in line, we've had things in the city get out of line before, but where this, where this comes from right now, two, two places. One, John mentioned earlier that he's hired a children's librarian. If you look at our salary caps, we have no spot for a library, a children's librarian, we have a library clerk. And so, one thing we're doing there is adding that position to the cap schedule. If you look further down, we used to have a spot for an assistant fire chief, or a part-time fire chief, I'm sorry, we're taking that out. Under Public Works, we had general labor, maintenance, grounds technician, all that, all those titles, we're changing that to a maintenance technician for that position, and just kind of eliminating some of those titles. But one of the areas that really concerned me, and I brought it up to Kristy and John both, was our patrol officer salary. And our range was, our range that we have there was getting out of line with surrounding communities. And so, Kristy got me the information from Prairie Grove, and I don't remember who else, still have it on my phone, but, and it's, it runs, I mean, as many cities as we looked at, there was that many differences. But what I was proposing here was to increase that top cap salary amount to forty-five thousand, which puts us more in line with the surrounding areas, cities of our size, you know, we're not comparing to Springdale or Fayetteville, however, we are getting in line with them if we move that cap to that position. And the last time we talked about this, I said, "If we want to have caps, this is something that I want us to review regularly." I do not want our position getting to a point where we're having difficulty retaining employees due to where our salary limits are. And we've, we've made a point to tell the department heads that the entry salary, that's, that doesn't mean someone has to start there just because they're coming into the city, that's just a starting point, okay? So, if we expand this range on the police officers this year, that's something I want to do, we just lost an officer, and as mayor, I can tell you, I really appreciate having the competent police officers that we have. Goggins, I can't thank you enough, and that goes for the rest of them. I do not have issues with police officers, those guys are professional, they're courteous. We've had people, and you guys have been aware of that, we've had people write us thank you letters that we have written tickets to, that speaks highly to our officers, and I don't want to lose them because we have a little salary cap. So, what I'm proposing, what I'm asking is, on these changes, add a position for children's librarian, shrink up some of those other titles, and then expand the salary range for patrol officer. Any questions about that or concerns? I think we need to go through all of them and revisit all of them. I agree with that a hundred percent, John, and I've actually told Kristy that I wanted to start here just in the interim, but next year, I want this, this list to be blown up and we went through line by line. I just, I feel like we have a more immediate need, one, for a children's librarian that we have on staff now, and two, to get our, our police patrol officers in a, a better spot.
This was a source of it. I've had my time, Kristy and I have never saw eye to eye on anything.
She didn't talk to me for two years.
In the past, we've had some salaries that weren't necessarily council-managed, that were ballooned to a point where they were deemed to, so the, the council's reaction to that was to come in with a set of salary caps, beginning and ending salary, to combat that, so that it didn't get out of hand. Go.
You guys don't behave that way anymore, you guys watch every penny now. I mean, when I got here, you hadn't done an audit in ten years, and now you watch every penny. Kristy hears you guys, you know where every dime in the city is, you just don't, you don't conduct yourselves out anymore, you just don't. So, I, I don't know of any other city that does this.
Well, I think maybe it's because it's tax dollars, it makes people feel more comfortable at the federal level we have salary caps, but you also can work up to a new level of salary caps.
So, I would tell you.
It's, it's different, but you see what I'm saying.
Picket house employees in your organization, so it's a little different than.
I would tell you this, before we go down that road, because I have, I have been down this road with the department heads, I feel the same way, they all know that. I will tell you, the department heads like it because it gives them a sense of calm, if you will. Agreed, the city is not operating like it has in the past, but that doesn't mean that this group will always be here, right? So, the department heads like that protection to an extent, to an extent, so I think, and I will be the first to tell you, if they tell me different, or they can tell you.
We all know it's reviewable, right.
If you look at it every year, the budget time.
This is not something that was ever like, this is what it's going to be, and we're never going to change it, we're never going to look at it.
And I would hope that department heads would know that they could come to city council, that they really had, somebody they really wanted, that they needed more money to obtain that person. I would not object to that at all.
I think we made that clear, though, when we first said it, that it was not set in concrete forever.
So, I can tell you, as long as I'm mayor, we will review this yearly, because I don't like them, number one, and number two, I want to make sure that, that our city employees are not financially being hurt just because they work for the city, so.
Well, I, I mean, entry salaries, that means a lot when you advertise. If someone says, "I'm going to bring up the deputy clerk, eight fifty an hour," there's some responsibilities for a deputy clerk. You, you know, if you advertise eight fifty and it tops out at fifteen eighty-seven, when people read that, they're going to think they're starting at eight fifty. You know, I, I just, there's a lot of responsibility with that, and I just, I think we need to look at the whole thing before we vote on it. And one thing about the police officer, we added four thousand to top it out, I think we need to add some for the start. Fourteen forty-two is not enough to be a police officer, it's not. I started back in nineteen seventy, or nineteen ninety-six for seven dollars and seventy-seven cents an hour. Yes, but I, I mean, fourteen forty-two, that I think did not start more.
And, and so, I, I don't disagree with John at all.
Yeah.
This was a starting point for me this year, because we are close to, to budget time, and, and we do have, we just lost an officer due to pay now, not that this is going to help us compete, but Officer Langston was really, he struggled with that, that decision. He liked working here, he liked what he was doing, but the offer of more money was just more than he could take.
Well, I, I mean, one thing about Langston, he's worked here twice, he's quit twice now.
But if, our entry salary on a patrol officer is about mid-range, if you look at, at the surrounding cities, that's about when most of those start on that. the surrounding cities, that's about when most of those start on that.
I thought to say you have to start a bit.
Oh, I know.
I know that, I know that. But when people apply. When you're working, however. You don't advertise.
I don't think you put the dollar amount on there.
No, you usually don't do that, they don't come up with that later.
So, I would, I would ask that.
Everyone I've seen, well, not West Fork, but just like Lincoln, when they advertise in Prairie Grove, they'd always, well, I guess it's on social media.
I would ask that we, we consider the changes that we have tonight, and definitely be prepared to address the entire list next year at some point, even coming here.
You don't think we need to address it before budget?
Next year?
No, I mean.
That's, that's what I'm wanting to do tonight, yeah, I'm wanting to address.
Yeah, but you only changed one, is what I'm saying.
We want to address this one tonight, and then we can readdress everything else. We can readdress these again, these same ones we're going to.
Do we have a motion for, for the salary cap that we had before us?
I'll make a motion for the salary caps.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and second? To approve the changes as proposed. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no?
No.
Okay.
I think we need to look at all of them.
I agree with you, we're not disagreeing, it's just in timing. So, motion does carry.
We're just putting it off.
Next item is the review letter that the mayor signed approving sale of five vehicles and a toolbox.
I'm not sure if they know.
Well, and this is, this is what our auditor wants to see.
Yes.
They want to see that we're dotting i's and crossing t's, so.
And so, how are you selling these?
Seal bids, they've also, this is, part of the order is, they're all valued under twenty thousand, so what we needed was a list of the items and a signature from the mayor to sell them. This is to make the council aware of what's, what's going on.
And we aren't required to do seal bids because of, because of being under twenty thousand, but we did, hoping that it would just generate more. It actually does, bid process closed yesterday, and all of them.
They're telling us nothing about that?
Yeah, Facebook.
You have one of them wrong.
Like, and they've already been done, we need to approve it.
You didn't have to, that, you didn't have to.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You need to know what's, you need to know what's going on.
That's what we look.
Let's see, tell the ones up there about the book building.
Uh, next.
So, you knew something was going on.
So, the next item up is a budget line adjustment from a library to move some money to cover the book purchases line item.
So, can I talk now?
Absolutely, go ahead.
And every time I see the book, that line is described as books, I, I think we've got to get that changed, because it should be new materials, and, you know, more and more, every year, I think, more of our money and more of our checkouts go towards audio visual materials. Books on C D are really popular and growing, and D V Ds cannot, we just cannot keep them in the library, they're just fly out of there, so, and we never have enough, we never have enough new stuff, so. But I'll state the obvious, I have not done a good job on this line this year, and I have to do some real sort of reflecting on, you know, what went wrong, and how I need to, you know, do better. And so, one thing I'm going to do is a little, not to go all insider baseball on you, but we're going to, I'm going to cancel all our standing orders, because I think they're soaking up too much of our budget, so we've canceled one already that we've, contract was up in August, and there's two more at the end of the year that we're going to cancel, and we'll just go to sort of on-demand ordering, like if somebody requests a book or an item, and just focus more on a little more strategic ordering, rather than, you know, these standing orders would save us a lot of trouble, but in the end, they're taking up too much for our budget. And, you know, maybe not, you know, we can do better in terms of getting stuff that is more, in keeping with where we are, and more, more things on local history, Arkansas regional, so. So, I would, I would like to ask for four thousand dollars from the capital outlay to go into the books budget, and I think that'll be more than sufficient to pay what's coming up. We've still got one, from one of those standing orders, we've still got invoices coming in regularly, and maybe allow us to do a little ordering, but mainly is to get, make sure everything gets paid, and again, I know I need to do much better, so. Another factor is our friends' group, who's, you know, some of the hardest working people in the city, and all volunteer, but, you know, they're not getting paid for what they do, they're, they're holding on to their money for now, they haven't given any money for books this year, and I know that I've asked for any, but, but they're, they want to make sure this expansion is responsible, that we're not just going to open a library with empty, with nothing to check out. So, they're building up their savings, and I think, I heard, they're very, the clients are very healthy right now, so they're going to help us when we reopen the library after the construction. Any questions?
Questions for John, John?
I say pretty please, if not else.
Kristy, is that, budget-wise, is that doable?
He has got eighty-six hundred left in his capital outlay.
I'll make a motion.
That?
Move four hundred dollars. Four thousand, yeah, because he's six over.
Don't scare me like that.
Yep, four thousand from the capital outlay.
Just a little stretch. So, a motion, second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next is a review of our, and approve, our twenty sixteen city audit. Involved in sent an electronic copy of that. I hope everyone had much fun reading that as I did.
You know you love it, you know you do.
So, in our audit, we had two things specifically that were pointed out to us. One is in there every year, that due to our size, we have a hard time with segregation of duties, and what that specifically refers to is cash management. What, in the auditing world, the accounting world, what you don't want is me taking money from somebody, writing a deposit slip, and then taking that money to the bank. There's no oversight there. So, Kristy has policies and procedures in play, how her and Amanda handle that at city office, we have policies and procedures in play, how we handle that at the library. That's the two places where we accept cash. We will continue to be deemed for that in every audit that we have, until we grow to such a size that we have more people that can, can participate in those procedures.
As will every city that you've held out.
Yes, that is correct, that is correct. Some of that is an auditor protecting himself. He's not going to give a green light on stuff that he doesn't see day to day. The other thing that, that the auditor pointed out was that in twenty sixteen, the city purchased, purchased something without a bid. The bid wasn't approved by the city council. Am I saying it right?
Well, he, he, it was written up because we didn't take bids.
Yes.
Because I couldn't find documentation that a bid was taken. That's, I found out today, was incorrect, I happened upon the paperwork where we actually did take bids, so, after the audit was complete, and he had already written this up for it, I found it, so, it's really not an issue. One way or the other, we're not going to have an issue with it in the first place, but it's good to know that we really did what we were supposed to, and moving everything up there, everything is just not where I'm putting my fingers on it when I should, so.
And so, part of the reason, you guys probably noticed in, in the audit report, that they recommend we go over these, these budgets monthly, and that's why it's so important that we do, we study them, we stay on top of them, that's, that makes it to the audit report, that our council is reviewing the financial accounts each month, and that's a good thing, that's where we want to be, and it shows with, with the way you guys have helped these budgets intact, so. So, do I have a motion regarding the acceptance of that city audit?
I'll make the motion, acceptance.
Have a motion, second, to accept the, accept and approve the city audit twenty sixteen? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no? Motion carries. Lastly, in our new business, is to appoint and swear in Anne Upton as city clerk. So, we discussed this, we had an open election, Anne is the only person who has applied to run, the only person who filed the paperwork to run for city clerk. Kristy is currently sitting in as a deputy city clerk, we made that motion a while back, approved that. So, tonight, I would like to swear in Anne, and let her go ahead and take that position over since no one is running. It will not cause, you know, ill harm on, on another candidate, that's what I wanted to make sure of, so, since she's unopposed, and we're happy to have her. Anne, did Kristy give you a copy of this?
Yes, she did.
So, I would like to swear you in. Is the council okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if you would, Anne, repeat after me. I, Anne Upton, do hereby solemnly swear.
I, Anne Upton, do by, hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of city clerk.
And I will faithfully discharge the duty of city clerk.
Of the city of West Fork, Arkansas.
Of the city of West Fork, Arkansas.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Alright, next, we have an executive session on the docket. I'd like a motion for us to enter executive session. All those in favor say yes? All those opposed say no? Motion carries. So, for, everyone that's here, we, we enter an executive session when we want to talk about personnel, so that if it's, if it's bad, if it's good, it's not aired to the public. So, tonight, we're going to have an executive session, we're going to go to the courtroom, the council and myself are going to go to the courtroom, and then we're going to bring in the library board and John, and then we will come back and reconvene the meeting. If anyone wants to leave at this time, you're more than welcome to, or you're more than welcome to stay, we'll come back, we'll reconvene the meeting. If there's any action to be taken, we'll take action. If there's no action to be taken, we will adjourn the meeting, okay?